And we're good.
Good evening. It is 5:30 PM on Wednesday, February 3rd, 2021, and this is the regular meeting of the Sandpoint City Council. I now call the board. For the record, I am Mayor Shelby Ronstadt, presiding in council chambers in City Hall, 1123 West Lake Street, Sandpoint, Idaho. Also present in chambers are Councilman Joel Espero and Andy Grove. Councilmember Shannon Sherman, Deb Rule, John Darling, and Kate McAllister are present and attending remotely this evening. So everyone now, everyone now please rise to the podium.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and
Are there any announcements from council? Counselor Rule, you're muted, I believe. Go ahead. Oh, we still can't hear you. It says that your mute is off, but I can't hear you. Counselor, I'm going to move to staff and give you a couple of minutes to try and work that out, hopefully. Okay, can you hear me? Okay, we'll move to staff announcements.
Mr. Mayor, we have a couple of announcements tonight. I want to first start with retirements. We've had a couple of longtime city employees retire in the last few weeks, and we've been challenged with how we celebrate retirements for our employees, and especially longtime employees for many months now amid COVID restrictions with gathering and things. So tonight, I wanted to hand it over to Chief Hopkins to give kind of a brief summary about Mick Adams and his time with the Sandpoint Fire Department and as part of the South Creek Fire JPA, and then I'll turn it over to Amanda for another employee in her area.
All right, thanks. So Mick Adams is here with us tonight in the audience. He's given us 37 years of service at City of Sandpoint. 10 of those years have been as a volunteer and 27 years as a career firefighter. Mick has been a hazmat tech. He's been a tech rescue. He's been our IT guy. He's the guy I always go to for the history of the fire department in Sandpoint. He's been a great asset to the organization. He's been my go-to guy whenever I have a question. So he's going to be greatly missed, and fortunately, he's going to hang around for a while as a volunteer with us some more so I can be weaned of his knowledge, I guess you could say. So with that, I'd like to thank him.
Congratulations, Mick.
Thank you.
Mick Adams, do you want to say anything?
No.
Okay.
I'm quite a guy. You don't know that by now. I don't like the limelight.
We appreciate you coming and really wanted to recognize you again for all the heat given to citizens of the city and for coming tonight because we knew it wasn't, you don't want to be in the limelight. But thank you for coming and so we could acknowledge you.
Thank you.
Our second employee is in our infrastructure development services area and specifically was our chief operator for our water treatment plant for decades of service with the city as well. So Dave Paffundy also retired with us in the last few weeks. So Amanda?
Thank you, Jennifer. Yes, also another employee who doesn't really like a lot of attention. Dave decided not to be here this evening, but although he may have been quiet, he's certainly going to be missed. As Jennifer mentioned, Dave Paffundy had been with us for 14 years with the city. He's seen us go through a lot of changes, and I really commend him for his professionalism, as well as really providing quality drinking water to all of our users, as well as keeping us in compliance. That's really not an easy feat. He was a licensed water treatment plant operator, Class 4. It's the highest classification and license that you can have. He did a great job of leading his team and really getting us to a solid place here. So we're very much going to miss him, and yeah, look forward to what's in store for him in the future. He also is staying local and going to spend some time with family. So I want to thank him very much for his service.
Thank you. And Dave avoided the limelight tonight, but we're glad we got Mick to come out tonight. So thank you. Second update reminder that we have our second of three weekly transportation workshops is tomorrow evening at 6:00 PM. And we did last week's via Zoom. Our presenters, our consultants are via Zoom, so it's really most effective for that presentation for that to be a Zoom rather than some coming in person. And I'll get to that here in a minute. But people who are interested in it, you can register for the workshop right on our webpage. It's right on the main page. There's a link to the transportation workshops. Not only can you register for the transportation workshop tomorrow, but you could also view the workshop from last week. So we did that via Zoom. It was recorded. You could visit that as well. And if that time doesn't work for people, we have concepts online. They're also on display here in City Hall, and people can go online and provide comments, or they're welcome to come in and have a conversation with us in the office. So a couple of different ways of doing that. So this week's topic will be issues, safety issues primarily, and proposed improvements along Division Avenue. Council will be hearing later tonight about a road safety audit and acceptance of that report, which was done along Division Avenue. So the public can also access that online and provide comments on those proposed improvements, as well as our bicycle and pedestrian networks throughout town. So those will be the topics of this week for transportation. And then finally, relative to our ongoing topic of COVID, for those who may not have seen it, the governor issued an announcement this week that he was moving us back up to Stage 3 in reopening, which means that groups of 10 have now been expanded to groups of no more than 50, which for us here at the city has meant when we were over 10, we could open up our council chambers to public meetings again. So we've done that tonight. As mentioned and presented to council at the last council meeting, we're going to be doing a remodel of council chambers to improve both the in-person participation experience, as well as the online experience, particularly on the audiovisual front. And so we will be moving our meetings to Community Hall here probably in the next four to six weeks once that work gets underway. So we'll have to see what we can do with space for in-person attendance there, but we intend to try to keep our meetings open. And we are getting event permit requests coming in, so we are permitting events subject to us being at Stage 3 or beyond for events of up to 50 people. We have had a couple of cases where we have events and they're looking for beyond 50 people, and the governor's advisory specifically provided for those events may occur in special circumstances where there is approval from Panhandle Health District addressing social distancing and things. So for someone with a larger event that needs to go through permitting, contact us, and we can also point you to that process and the way that that can occur as well. And finally, on that front, we've had a couple of questions this week relative to the mask mandate and the continuation of the mask mandate by Panhandle Health District and what that means for the city relative to enforcement. And we have taken, our policy has been primarily around education on that front with some outreach. And I'm going to hand it over to Chief Kuhn to give an update again on what we're doing in that area, because there's been questions, as well as an update on complaints, concerns that have come into the police department in that regard.
Thank you. I'll keep it short and sweet. Basically, to start with, we're going to kind of continue the same pattern that we talked about a few months ago with the police department and stay in that course about that education, that support role that we're supposed to be in, helping those businesses in our downtown, even those private citizens that want to feel safe. So that's, I think that's the key. And the reason we got to take that stance is for, let me go through that really quick. Last time we spoke, we told you we're going to try to track those complaints coming in in reference to mask-related issues or complaints. We roughly had about 13 complaints this last November in reference to masks in general. And I say in general, I'll explain why in just a second. So of those complaints we've had, we've responded to the hospital where people are showing up for COVID-related complaints. They don't like the rules. We've been at a hospital and helped them out interpreting their rules. We've had three people call in specifically with questions on what's the mask mandates for Sandpoint, and some of those the officers have spoken with. We had one mask complaint come in in reference to littering, people throwing their mask around town. We've trespassed one person from a business in town for not following the rules. In this case, it was related to the mask. Some of those other ones get tied to the mask because there's either, there's another element that goes with it. A good example would be is we had a case with a fraud. Somebody went into a bank, put the mask and had it on, wanted to cash a check, wouldn't remove the mask. It was fraudulent. They ended up leaving. They weren't able to identify the suspect because of the mask. So I think it's tied to some of the mask complaints. We've had a couple of other cases where there have been some fights that have taken place. One individual is wearing a mask, so they can't be identified. So when it's, the 13 includes some of those other ones, but the reality is you're looking at about seven complaints. And I say complaints because they're calls curated, but questions are the only answers on that. One of the reasons we're staying in that course, I know it's been a big debate of what can law enforcement legitimately do with the Panhandle Health District's order that came out. As most everybody knows, in January, they met again, they extended that mandate for another couple of months. And if you read that mandate, it gives some like explanations of what we should be doing. We should be maintaining a six-foot distance. We should wash our hands and do all those things. We should wear a mask if we can. And you can go back and reread it again. The part that I really wanted, just to kind of make council aware of it, once you get to the very bottom of that mandate, it says the criminal statute that they want us to enforce. And the criminal statute they cite is IDOC 5610037C. And so to find out how we're supposed to cite that, you got to go look that subsection up and look at it. And so before I came in today, and I should have probably looked this up a few months ago. But if you look at it so that, and I'll just break it down really quick. That first section, 561003, talks about the powers that the district has to set rules and guidelines. Then you skip down to the next section they cite, which is the 7. And this is where it really becomes complicated for law enforcement. And I'm going to read this. There's subsection 7 says, "The director, under rules adopted by the Board of Health and Welfare, shall have the power to impose and enforce orders of isolation and quarantine to protect the public from the spread of infectious and communicable diseases." And it goes on, talks about a couple of other little things. So keep those two words in mind. And then you go down to subsection C, which is the charging document that we're supposed to fill out. And it says, "Any person who violates an order of isolation or quarantine shall be guilty of misdemeanor." So if you look at it at face value, at the words and speaking a little bit with our civil attorneys, speaking with our criminal attorneys, this is what we have to actually charge somebody with is a violation of an order to isolate or quarantine. So if you go back and you reread the Panhandle Health District's mandate, they don't use those words. In effect, they're talking about staying six feet apart, wearing your mask, social distancing, some of those things. And so we talk about why it's complicated for law enforcement. This is really what it comes down to. So we need the law enforcement to maintain our course and just help educate our public, handing out masks when people are asking for them, responding to calls with private businesses or those individuals that think there's a concern, and answering those questions, and kind of taking care of it on a case-by-case basis. So hopefully that gives you some clarity on kind of where we're at, some of the complications that come with that mandate, and kind of what we're doing.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions around that from anyone? Okay. Any other updates from staff?
No, I'm good tonight.
Counselor, Deb, you want to try again? Oh, shoot. It looks like your mute is still on, and we
Okay, can you hear me now?
You're good.
Yes? Okay, all right. So just a little COVID update. We've seen numbers go down in the new cases. Only 70 new cases in the whole district today. No deaths today. A total of 242 deaths since our last meeting. That's 27 more deaths over the last two weeks. 29 total deaths in Bonner County. That means we've had five additional people die just in our county over the last two weeks since our last meetings. Like I said, the numbers are going down, but there is a pretty big concern about Super Bowl Sunday becoming a super-spreader event, and we'll see a spike in our numbers as people will kind of let their guards down and get out and do activities together. So I just suggest to everyone in the community, you still need to stay safe and vigilant, and hopefully we are starting to see a light at the end of the tunnel with more people getting vaccines, and numbers will continue to decline.
Thank you, Counselor. You froze on us there. I don't know if you had more to add there, but you are frozen for us.
I froze.
It sounds like we have you back now. Was there anything that you wanted to say there at the end that maybe we missed?
At the end, just for everybody to be safe, and also to ask the mayor to take a moment of silence for those five people that have died in our county since our last meeting, please.
Be happy to do that. Thank you, Counselor. Appreciate those words. Sir, can we have 30 seconds of silence to recognize the five people who passed away since our, in the last two weeks?
Starting. That's 30 seconds, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize. I'm a bit out of order. I got focused on our retirements and excited about that, and I neglected to have our finance director, Treasurer Sarah, provide an update on the local option tax.
Okay, that'd be great.
We have officially ended the local option tax, and I wanted to give a few numbers and a few statistics. We have, we have, most everybody has remitted to the final end of the year. There's a handful, maybe about 30 people who have not, 30 businesses who have not. Most of them are small and just do an annual return with a dollar or two here or there. So nothing of big concern to Martin. Just kind of, we have reached out and have contacted every, everyone except for one individual. So that's good news. In total, we have, we have received $6,886,000 through the lot tax. In the meantime, we are spending, I've almost spent all of that with the memorial field. So it's coming along nicely. And other than that, we will have, with the annual audit, we will have more updates. The last, want to give one final one, is the last year actuals came in, actually higher fiscal year 20 came in higher than fiscal year 19 for a lot tax. And it's another quick one, the resource city tax actually did come in almost 400,000, which is about 40,000 less than the year before. So it actually came in looking very well as well, much better than what we initially anticipated with the whole COVID scenario going on. So just a quick snippet, and then as audit is finished up, we will be giving more updates on how fiscal year 20 ended up.
That's great. Thank you.
We do have some remaining budget of the local option tax revenues available. We did budget this year, and just a reminder that those dollars are allocated to this next phase of construction at War Memorial Field, which is the parking lot improvements, the boat launch improvements, kayak launch, all of the improvements in that area. We are out to bid with that project actually tomorrow. So we anticipate construction this spring and the boat launch being reopened to voters Memorial Day weekend.
Fantastic. Excellent. And I'd remind those watching at home perhaps that we had committed to voters when the law was passed in 2015, we had committed to a five-year local option tax of 1%. We were projecting a mere $5 million. So $6,886,000 is really impressive that we've well surpassed our conservative projection, and I think that speaks well to how well our team has done collectively to steward our resources, steward our tax dollars, and we were able to come through and provide on that project, meet our commitment with the Memorial Field project. And as that continues through the spring, I'm sure we'll all be able to experience all the fruits of that hard work and that investment for years to come. So congratulations to the taxpayers and to staff for seeing this project through. And I think that's something that really we thought of this week. Okay, anything else, Deb? Next is the public forum portion of the meeting, which gives the public an opportunity to address council itself regarding items listed on the consent calendar or on any topic not listed on the agenda. Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak during the public forum?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. To accommodate those who wish to speak on general terms during the public forum, as well as those who wish to speak on specific business items on our agenda, a total of 20 minutes will be dedicated to public forum at the beginning of the meeting. If you'd like to speak and do not have an opportunity to do so, we will give everyone an opportunity to speak by reopening the public forum at the end of our regular agenda. In the interest of time, please do not repeat prior comments, but simply state your support of those comments. Comments shall not be personally derogatory, nor shall they be personally directed by the individual, organization, or business. Please note, if you are participating by Zoom, you will need a working microphone on your smartphone or computer in order to participate. When your name is called, you will see a prompt on your screen to unmute. You'll need to press or click the unmute button in order to be heard. Each speaker will be allowed three minutes. You will now begin the first 20 minutes of the public forum. Now, first speaker is?
Mr. Prather, did you wish to speak?
Mr. Prather, we cannot hear you.
I'm here, actually. We haven't raised the topic that I was, wanted to speak on, but I was just looking forward to hearing more from the council about a statement of unity moving forward, and wanted, wanted to hear about what that, what that was, I guess, before I elaborated any comments. As far as just some technical issues, it would help on, on this side for anyone still wearing a mask to, if you could, when you speak, to pull it down, because it's, it's pretty difficult to understand you through the, through the Zoom system here. That's all.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Prather. Clerk, is anyone else signed up to speak this evening?
No one else has signed up. If anyone else participating on Zoom would like to speak during the public forum, please raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor, but I know we have a couple of members of the audience here in chambers.
Okay. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during the public forum? Okay. That concludes the public forum for this evening. The consent calendar is the next item on the agenda. For the record, the total amount of bills is $471,897.97, the rate of pay. Are there any items council wishes to remove from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I would entertain the motion that the consent calendar be moved.
Moved.
It's been moved and seconded, I think. Two seconds?
Second.
Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Sherman did, I believe.
Okay, thank you. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilman Espero?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Motion passes. The first item under whole business this evening is the Division Avenue Safety Audit with a presentation from Infrastructure Development Services Manager Amanda Wilson. She got the words, Amanda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, everyone. I am really excited to bring this topic forward to you this evening. We have a team online with us here that will be providing majority of the presentation. But before I introduce them, I just wanted to give just a hair of background on this project. This has been a long time coming, which is why we're so excited to bring it forward. Staff applied for a grant, specifically a local highway safety improvement program grant, actually back in 2018. And I really want to give kudos to Bruce Robertson, a staff member on our team who really is passionate about this and has been instrumental in seeing it forward. Him and Jennifer worked hard on the grant application, and it was awarded to the city on July 17th, 2019. The grant is actually administered by LTAC, and so that's where I'll start with my introductions. We have Brian Wright with LTAC on the line with us tonight. Brian is the project manager for LTAC and has actually come to Sandpoint and been boots on the ground and worked really closely with Linda Hyes, our grant administrator as well, in getting us to the point that we're at today. And then also on the line, we have our consultant that you have met in the past, our traffic engineer, Preston Stinger with Barr and Pierce. Preston has been the lead on this project and will be giving the presentation this evening. So with that introduction, Preston and Brian, I will turn it over to you.
Excellent. Thank you, Amanda. Happy to be here tonight, even though it's remote. Would prefer to be there in person, but that's how things are going these days. So appreciate to have the technology ability to be able to do this, which is, which is great in this day and age. Brian's here with me, our partner in this, and they've been a great partner, as well as the city. And it's been a great project from beginning to end. So Brian will be here for questions as things come up and correct me where I steer away from where I should be. So we'll start off with talking about what a road, road safety audit is. This started earlier in 2020, and with COVID and things, got delayed a little bit so we could see how things were going during school hours and made sure we were addressing impacts throughout all types of conditions. So there was a little bit of delay there, but once school got back up and going, we, we went forward pretty strong towards this. So excited to talk about what the outcome of this is. I guess I need to show my screen. Let me do that. All right. Can I get a thumbs up from someone just so I can see my screen? Great. Okay, so as part of this study, it's kind of a formal process that the Federal Highway Administration has that you all went through to get the grant for this. And so it's, it is a formal process that follows these eight steps on the screen there. And so you all select the roadway you want to do. You select the RSA team, which was where we came into play. We do a pre-audit meeting to review project information, which was, was done to basically understand what's going out the street, what data's available. And then we go to step four to perform field reviews, which we'll talk about that here in a minute. And then we conduct analysis based on what we observed and what the data is showing. And then we go to present findings, which is what we're doing today. And then we get a formal response from the owners, which is the city in this case. And that formal response is basically outlines what actions you as the city are willing to take in response to each of the safety issues listed in the report. And I know you had the report for a few days and may not have made it through the whole thing, but we encourage you to do so and collectively come back with a, and a formal response that is the city's stance on how you would like to move forward with those. And if there are any that, any that you would not like to implement or move forward with, that should be clearly stated as well. And then final step is incorporate that into, into the project. And then final step is incorporate that into, into the project. Or I know Amanda has the goal of tying this into the multi-model transportation master plan as the projects, as a set of projects within that plan. So it can be implemented as the years go along here. Feel free to chime in if you have any questions along this. I'm happy to clarify things as needed. So there's a, an audit team that was pulled together. And this is meant to be a multi-disciplinary team that has skill sets in a lot of different areas. So you have people who are interested or have skills in traffic operations and school operations and utilities, maintenance of the roadway, local context of the roadway. And so this is the group that was pulled together. We have Amanda Wilson and Bruce Robertson from the city, from IDS. We have Chief Corey Kuhn from the police, Steve Clapp from the county, Eric Billings and Matt Deal from the school district, Brian Wright from LTAC, and then the two of us from Farron Pierce. And this team was pulled together to do the field reviews. So we were out in the field for a couple of days back in October, I believe it was. And looked, we, we basically walked up and down that road several times throughout the day, these two days, at different periods of time. In peak morning, peak afternoon, middle of the day, middle of the night, early morning before school, right during school let out, so that we looked at all different types of conditions to make sure we're not missing something. So I mentioned that part of it is gathering some data. And this RSA's are meant to be less quantitative and more qualitative. So while we use some data to help inform us, we don't use data to analytically say this what needs to be done. This is, this is more about looking at the corridor as a whole and as a safety in a systemic way, where even if there aren't issues popping up through crash data, we still need to identify those so we can clear those up before it become a safety issue in the future. So one of the pieces of data are understanding what kind of traffic levels we have on these roadways. Because without traffic, we, we have less issues. In this case, we've got, these may be a little bit blurry on your screen, but we have sixty-six hundred average daily traffic on the road of Division. And I should mention also that the extent of the, of the RSA was from Michigan to the south, up to Cedar to the north. However, there was interest to going all the way up to Spruce, given the proximity of the elementary school there. So we extended our study area up to Spruce. So sixty-six hundred on Division. And you can see some of the side streets there and their daily traffic numbers there, ranging from about a thousand up to forty-four hundred on the west side of Pine Street there. And then the, the truck percentages on the other chart there that I know are hard to read, but we're looking at six percent on Division Avenue, six percent of the traffic on that road is truck traffic, which may not be surprising to you, knowing that that's a truck route and there are some industrial uses to the north of us there. And that will likely remain that way until other roadways and truck routes are, are available to do that and move trucks off of this road. We also collected some crash data and LTAC and ITD have a great source for this sort of information. And Chief Kuhn was able to, to back up this with his own information. And I won't go into a lot of detail on this, but if, if you want to get into detail, I encourage you to look at the report in more detail if you, if you want to look at that. This just identifies where crashes are happening along the corridor, what types, what types of crashes they are, which is on the right-hand side. And, and then on the left-hand side, it's how severe they were. A being an injury of some sort, serious injury typically. And the, the less warm you get into the grains, more it's just property damage and not injury. And have not had any fatalities here, at least in the last five years that this was, was looked at. The, the chart here shows the summary of crashes for Division Avenue. And on the right-hand side of that chart is statewide in Idaho, what those crashes are, just for comparison purposes, to see how this corridor matches up with kind of statewide conditions. And you can see most of the, most of the crashes that occur on the road are property damage only crashes, which is, which is good from a, we don't want anyone getting injured, but at the same time, it does cost money. Where it not only costs, it costs individuals money, but also costs the city money to respond to those incidents. And then we looked at conditions are, were things happening more in the day or nighttime and are those contributing factors? And then the crash types and what are most of the crash types happening out there? In this case, it's the angle crashes. So mainly left-turning cars at an intersection, getting hit by an oncoming car the other direction is usually what's, what's occurring there with those angled crashes. The, the figure on the right-hand side is what we call a heat map. And the, the darker colors show the areas that there are more dense crashes occurring. This is showing that Pine Street and Cedar Street are the two intersections with the higher number of crashes. And those are eight crashes and five crashes respectively, each of those intersections, just to give you some context of what those colors mean. Well, then we went out in the field, did these, the, the field review we talked about before. And I'll run through some observations that we saw out there as a group and identified as, you know, these are things that maybe we should look at or are potential issues that we see out there. So one is we have significant traffic peaks at the school starting in times. As, as you're, I'm sure you're aware, there's a crossing guard out there in the mornings to help direct traffic as well as to help kids cross safely at those crosswalks. This is at Michigan street that you can see in the picture there. In the afternoon, there is not a crossing guard there, just as a additional observation. And I will say much kudos to that crossing guard. He, he works a lot of magic out there. Typically, a crossing guard is just putting up a stop sign to help the kids cross, but he's, he's basically a, an officer. I know he, he has some, some law enforcement in his background, but he is great at his job and really directs traffic in a, in a safe and efficient way to keep things from queuing too much and, and to keep kids safe out there. Observation two is just north of Michigan here. We're now looking north. And you can see one individual crossing the street there. We're standing on the corner of Michigan and on that right-hand side of that picture is a parking lot for the church. And you, a lot of parents use that as a pickup and drop-off area. So you get a lot of kids crossing the road in mid-block, jaywalking, so to speak, instead of using the crosswalks there at Michigan. Didn't see any close calls, but not to say they can't, that can't happen. And it's obviously, especially during these peak school times, it's much more precarious situation. At many of these intersections, there are, we have ADA ramps. A lot of them are not compliant, meaning either slopes are not adequate or because of different curvings and things that are happening there. And those, the truncated domes, which are those red pads there for tactile reasons for the those who have disabilities for sight can, can fill those, be able to cross safely and know where the crosswalk is. They're not located in the, in the right locations and they're not covering the areas they should be covering to allow those individuals to cross safely. And you can see the curb there on the picture. That's kind of separating the two different ramps there that are, and you can see many people have hit that both from a vehicle standpoint and, and see bikes running over the top of that as well. The school's own signs, you can see in the picture there, those are in effect from seven-thirty in the morning until three-thirty in the afternoon through all hours, even though school start and end times only happen during those, within a half hour of that, you know, seven-thirty time and within a half hour of that three-thirty time, it's in effect throughout the whole day. And what happens with that is you often see low compliance when that's in effect all the time, which is what's happening out there today and was confirmed after speaking with not only Chief Kuhn, but some of the other officers that were patrolling the area that day. And, and another shout out to the police officers out there. The police department is doing a great job in enforcing things out there. And are patrolling it pretty heavily during those school times to ensure some higher safety and reduce speeds during those times. So kudos to them as well. This is looking north as you're approaching the Pine Street intersection. And you can see that queue of cars. This is in the afternoon when school lets out, so it's a little bit higher in terms of traffic. And that queue was starting to spill back away from the intersection. And you see in the center of the road, the two-way left turn lane that's striped in the yellow there. That is what occurs when this queue starts to spill back is vehicles coming out around. So in this case, they would come up to the red truck. And instead of waiting their turn to get up closer to where the left turn lane actually starts for the intersection, they, they jump out into the two-way left turn lane and use that as a lane to go up to the left turn lane. Now technically, that's not legal. And there have been crashes and very many near misses, according to, not only from observation, but according to the police officers. And, and that's an issue. And that's what's been causing many of the crashes here near this intersection. At nighttime, when we're walking through this, it was very apparent that it was, there are a lot of dark spots along the roadway. It becomes less of an issue as a motorist and much more of an issue as a pedestrian or as a cyclist traveling on this roadway. And there are bike lanes and they are a little bit substandard, meaning they're utilizing some of the gutter pan for that width of the roadway, which is not ideal, especially when you're in some snowy conditions and you start to stack up snow. That lane quickly disappears as well without having a park strip or plant strip alongside the sidewalk as well. The, the crosswalks are usually lit, at least with one light. Ideally, we'd like that on both sides and really light that up. From a motor standpoint, it's not difficult to see motorists per se, but it is difficult to see other users on the street if you are a motorist. So that's another observation. Some sight distance issues, meaning as you pull up to an intersection, how well can you see down the street to safely make a movement out, whether it's a left turn or right turn out or straight across that intersection? And, you know, how far do you have to inch out into that intersection before you can see safely to be able to make your movement? And there are many obstacles along this route that have some, some issues here. And you can see in this picture is one of those or two of those. One is vegetation that is poorly maintained, that's, that's hanging over the area for a motors to safely see as well as power poles that are obstructing that vision as well. There are a couple of bus stops along this corridor. There are some bus stops that are, are really well done. For instance, the one near the library that has a shelter and a bench there. There are others that are not so great, including this one here that is located in the grass with a, a pretty narrow sidewalk of five feet with no plant strip either between them and the roadway. And it's just inadequate in terms of having a safe and comfortable experience for a, an individual waiting for the bus. There's, this is near the, the junior high and high school. Some signage entering some of their parking lots, that's, that's substandard, not not standard from a national perspective that they, they should be. And it's a little bit confusing of whether you should stop or enter, given the proximity of those signs. Here's another instance of a power pole in the middle of a sidewalk that, you know, for, if there's a group of people walking down the street, that forces individuals to either walk into the grass or walk into the road and also a sight distance issue for vehicles at that intersection who are, who are trying to turn out looking down the street. And RRFB is a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is what those lights are at the crosswalk near the elementary school at Spruce, which they, they flash back and forth, the wig-wag effect, which are very effective. These, I love these installations at crosswalks, especially those that have lower compliance. And in this case, where we have younger children crossing, they do, they do a great job. So these have been in place for a while, I think a decade or so. And sounds like they've been working pretty well. Some additional observations, snow was a very common thing that we heard. Obviously, snow wasn't on the ground when we were walking it, but heard that over and over again from many different constituents that, you know, given the narrow sidewalk on the east side of the road, as snow gets piled up, it just goes over the top of the sidewalk and there's not a place for individuals to, to walk. And it forces them out in the roadway to walk or to cross the street and walk on the west side, which I understand the city does a good job clearing the multi-use path on that side. It's about a eight feet, I believe, wide path on that side, as well as we have bike lanes. So you'll see bikes both on that path as well as in the road, depending on their comfort level of riding in, in either. But with, with one side being closed because of snow and having another side open, that's only eight feet wide. That's really meant to be for bi-directional travel of multi-users, pedestrians and bikes. And so it's a little substandard to carry that. Let's see what else. Trucks, you know, there are some, some big trucks that travel up and down that road. You know, a mixture of trucks with regular traffic with school-age kids walking up and down or biking up and down is not conducive to the most comfortable situation. And heard from individuals that they prefer to walk with their kids on other parallel streets instead of division because of that. And then let's see the multi-use path we talked about already. Let's go on to some additional things. We checked sign reflectivity. Signs do have reflective reflectivity on them so that when you're in a car and your lights hit them, they, they should light up for you. We checked those as much as we could with flashlights as we were walking and they seem to be adequate as time goes along and as they have sun wear and those kinds of things, the reflectivity side of it wears off and that could be a problem, but it seemed to be okay for now. Lane width varies a little bit throughout Division. The, the total width of the road is pretty consistent, but depending on where you are on that section, it's either a three-lane section, you have a two-way left turn lane in the middle with one lane each direction south of Pine Street. And as you get north of Pine and Cedar, it drops down to two lanes. And they're much wider lanes at that point, which, you know, the wider the lanes, the, the higher the speed tends to be as well. And cycling, I mentioned this already, but we noticed both some in the lanes as bike lanes and some on the path as well. And, you know, as much segregation as you can, as you can have of those users, the better. But if you are going to share, the wider the path, the better. So then let's jump into some of the, the recommended mitigations for some of these observations that we noticed. One recommendation is we heard from individuals that it's very, they feel unsafe letting their kids walk to school on their own. And so they either walk them to school or they drive them to school. One possible strategy is to institute a walk to school, a walking school bus program, which is essentially transportation demand management strategy that's implemented across the country, which allows a, a group of kids to travel together, basically a walking school bus with a guardian leading them both in the morning and the afternoon. And and that's a program that the schools or school district can do, or the PTA or community group could put on. And that would help reduce some traffic that could be occurring today because parents don't feel safe letting their kids walk to school and they don't have the time to do it. Another recommendation is, we talked about how great the crossing guard is there today at the Michigan intersection. And it would be great to have another individual, if not him, out there in the afternoon doing the same thing when school lets out because it's a little bit more chaotic when he's not there. a little bit more chaotic when he's not there. And, you know, kids are getting out of school and ripping through the parking lot and ripping out of school. And it's, it can be a little precarious based on our our own observations there. And having another crossing guard there to help people cross, who, as we mentioned before, a lot of parents are waiting in that parking lot across the street. So there's a lot of kids crossing. And it would help to have that level of protection for them in both those peak periods. There's a section between Cedar Street and Spruce Street that does not have another crosswalk across Division. And that's about a 2,200 foot length when there's not where there's not a crossing. There's a crossing at at Cedar and there's crossing at Spruce. And we also heard from some of the locals there that live in that area that it's it's a long distance to walk to get to another crossing and which it is. So we recommend a another strict crosswalk across Division at First Street, which is almost right in half between Spruce and Cedar. It's about 1,000 feet between the two of them. And that that will help, you know, incentivize people to cross there instead of jaywalking at other locations where motorists may not be may not be expecting them. We talked a little bit about the school speed limit signs that are in effect essentially throughout the whole day from 7:30 to 3:30. And what that does is it starts to, people start to have low compliance when that's on all day. And by on, I mean, it's just a sign saying that it's on. And by having some flashing yellow lights that are actuated, and that could be either on a timer or the crossing guards oftentimes who are assigned to those nearby locations where the school zone will go over and they have the key to open it up, flick on the lights during the school time. When they're done, they go over, flick it off, lock it back up. This is, this is a pretty effective way to do this with flashing yellows and just gives another visual cue to the motors that something else is different here. And it's not on all day. So they there's much higher compliance when this is in effect. For now, we're recommending that still stay at 20 miles per hour, which is pretty standard. However, if that still is, if people still are traveling at a higher speed at, you know, above 20, then may want to consider dropping that down to 15. We talked about the Pine and Division intersection and the the issue with individuals coming out and around the queue of cars to jump that queue to get into the left turn lane, which has caused some crashes in the past. And this is, this can be fixed with some simple restructuring to eliminate the two-way left turn lane. And just start a left turn lane and not allow a, there's no need to have an opposite, a southbound left turn lane in this case, because there are no driveways during this section. So we can stripe it as a longer left turn lane storage length. So cars can get in there sooner and eliminate some of that conflict that's happening there today. And if it becomes a continual issue, because this is also near where that the bowling alley is, and there's a daycare there and a little coffee shop, and there's a lot of things happening there certain times a day. If there if there continues to be a lot of conflict with vehicles turning left out of those institutions on the west on the west side of the road, many to put in a raised median in the center of the road to eliminate some of that conflict. We recommend that a lighting inventory be done in this area. That would help determine where we need more lighting, both from a lighting up the road perspective, but also lighting up the crosswalks. And, you know, the more light, the more safe individuals feel and the more safe and inherently is. There's a lot of research out there about crime that happens when there's less light versus when there is more light. Remove as much as we can and maintain the vegetation. Obviously, this would be done ideally by the homeowners where this is occurring on the vegetation side anyway. And, you know, that there may need to be some requirement on making sure that's maintained both from a motorist sight distance standpoint and sight triangle standpoint, but also from a pedestrian standpoint who can't walk on the sidewalk because there's low hanging limbs and brush. We talked about these signs, replacing them with standard signs and and redoing where they're located, so less confusing. And the school district already, since they were part of our audit team, they've already purchased those signs. And and as far as I know, they they could be in already, but Matt had already committed to this is something he was going to change. So that's a great ambition on his part already. I felt to mention that that first that first set of recommendations was easier short-term things that can be done with limited cost upfront and probably things that can be done as soon as possible. This next section are medium term, things that may take a little bit more effort in terms of money and time. And those include redoing our ADA ramps, which are needed at a couple, a couple of these more key intersections, including Cedar and Pine and Michigan. Providing some more amenities at the bus stops, those that don't have them already, that could include benches and trash cans and shelters wherever we can, and at least some some concrete pads where they can wait and not be in in snow or in, you know, muddy grass and those kinds of things in inclement weather and can wait off at the sidewalk. So it clears a path for those who are traveling on the sidewalk. And then where are there where there are power poles sitting in the middle of sidewalks? I know this is a little bit of a bigger effort thing that is a little more expensive and and coordination needs to be done here, whether it gets buried or or just moved or, you know, bigger poles for longer spans and those kinds of things. But that's that is really needed to clear those spaces for the users of the sidewalk and to clear the site distances for those intersections. Now, long term, we are suggesting a change of cross section here. So looking at what available width we have, basically from back of sidewalk to back of sidewalk as your width in between your intersections, this is what we're recommending in the long term, is you restripe your lanes to be 12 and a half foot lanes. In a lot of cases, you're looking at 14 to 20 foot lanes in some cases, depending on where you are on the road, which is inducing a lot of higher traffic or higher speeds of traffic. And put in striped sheros, which are those bike stencil with the with the arrows on them, which indicate to motorists that this is a shared space. So those who are comfortable to travel on the travel lane can do so. And motorists are aware that they are and can be there. And then we have a wider planting strip or park strip, which you see on the west side of the road there, eight feet wide, which provides a good buffer between your multi-use path and your vehicle traffic. And that that encourages a lot more individuals to to use that multi-use path when they're a good distance away from the higher speed traffic. And also provides, it's kind of dual purpose, dual purpose, not only provides a buffer, but also provides area for snow storage in the winter months. And then on the west side there, it says bike lane. Like that, that's what we were limited to with the software we're using to create those cross sections. It's it's a multi-use path. So that's used for both pedestrians and bikes. And six-foot lane in the northbound direction, six-foot lane in the southbound direction. So it's a bidirectional multi-use path, 12 feet, which is, which is optimal for bidirectional travel and multi-use travel, meaning bikes and pedestrians are sharing. And then on the east side, we increased the plant strip there to six feet, not increase. There isn't one there today. So introduce a new plant strip to have a buffer there, which also has dual purpose of having snow storage so that we can open up a sidewalk there. Because today, snow storage just goes right on top of the sidewalk and there isn't one there. So let's provide a space for snow storage and then we can have a sidewalk still that individuals can walk on. And that would be widened to six feet, which is a foot wider than it is today. And then on the, as you near the intersections, we need to change that cross section slightly because we need to introduce left turn lanes where they are needed. So where we need to introduce a left turn lane, for instance, as you approach Pine Street, we introduce that 11-foot lane, we need to reduce our lanes to 11 feet in in that section, which is, which is a perfectly acceptable width for for traveling. We need to reduce our plant strips down to three feet on both sides. So we still have a buffer there, which we don't have today as you near those intersections. And then you still have those great wide paths. Either it's the multi-use path on the west side or the sidewalk on the east Here's a few benefits on what a what that new cross section will give us. I think I walked through most of these already. Let's see if there's anything I missed. I think we hit those all. So that's it. Reactions, comments?
Thank you, Preston. Appreciate that.
I just had a comment about, I have written down, it's back on page 22, I guess that's irrelevant, but the Pine and Division Inter-
Let's see if I can find that for you.
... just disallow in our region due to plowing and everything else. So that was just one thing that I thought wouldn't actually be appropriate for our region. And then I was just curious about the curbing near the high school, that Michigan intersection, and if that would be something more like was done around the Panada where it's flat and rounded. So we wouldn't have a plowing problem there also. And then my final comment would just be, I am really looking forward to all the safety that young schoolchildren and older schoolchildren will have if we get planting strips and we won't have plowing issues for snow and we won't have a path on the west side that just bumpity lumps over everybody's driveway entrance. So I think as far as looking down the long-term path, if we can make this happen, that that's going to change the entire feel of that neighborhood. And it definitely will slow traffic down and and just make it more livable for everyone, I believe. So, well done.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ruhl. Do you mind repeating that first comment of yours as I was distracted, trying to pull up my slide there?
No, that first comment, it was from page 22, I believe, recommendations. And intersection, I just think when we get into our winters and plowing, that those things just get damaged or or torn up. So I think I'm just hoping that we would never have to move to that extreme and that restriping would serve its purpose.
Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Any other questions?
Preston, thank you. I thought you did, this is Councilman Groth. Really think that you did a great job with capturing some of the challenges that we have up and down the street. I actually work up and down in those areas and it, some of these photos made me chuckle. The, we just have some very unique challenges that I think that you did a fantastic job and your team did a great job with finding them. And I'm pretty encouraged to see some of the different things and ideas that you guys have. I think that we're overdue with helping out our our spot and our bus line to actually have some really good bus places for people to have some shelter. It's, I see people standing on snowbanks and they're pretty exposed. And it's an underserved population that is using that spot bus. So for us to reinvest back into them and give some shelter, I really appreciate you bringing that up. Every everything else is is great. Obviously, I've got a couple of other comments, but I don't want to waste your time. But I don't think that curbing in the middle of the street, I know that's kind of a long-term aspect, but obviously, we have plowing that we do here. So concrete in the middle of the road, I just, I just don't see it. And then also along with the work that I do, it's service related. And so I'm going to speak to my garbage men and my fellow delivery individuals. I just have a tough time imagining where I would park or a garbage truck would park to be able to make service to some of these households while we're going across a 12-foot, a 12-foot either sidewalk or bike lane or multi-modal plan. So I would just ask at some point, have that explained to me so that we don't forget about our our service individuals that are delivering to these homes, if that question makes sense.
Yeah, that does, that makes a lot of sense. So as far as trash service, what typically happens when you have on a road such as this, which is an arterial street, generally, you want to keep your trash cans out of the travel lane unless there's a wider shoulder. Today, there's a wide enough shoulder where trash cans can be put out on the curb and not have much of an issue. As we go into the new cross sections that we are suggesting and we narrow up some of that road to to limit some of the or reduce some of the speeds, oftentimes you'll see those trash cans be put on the plant strip. So we don't want to obstruct sidewalks, obviously, we don't. And in this case, we don't, we're getting rid of the bike lanes. We don't have trash cans in the bike lanes any for any longer. So it should be more of a put on the plant strip and trash garbage truck comes along and picks them up from there. And, you know, the trash, the the service will be in the roadway and will stop traffic similar to what this is doing today, except where you have those huge lanes. And that's just kind of the nature of of the roadways. And generally, those are happening during middle of the time, middle of the day, when traffic's a little bit less than it is during those peak mornings and peak afternoons. So, you know, hopefully, we can utilize some of those wider plant strips to do that, where we're not obstructing the paths themselves with with trash cans.
Okay, thank you, Preston. Any other questions from Council? Thanks, Amanda.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add one? And I agree. Thank you, Preston. I appreciate the presentation. I just wanted to make mention if it wasn't, if it didn't stand out in the report, as well as the council packet. What we're asking council tonight to do is to consider accepting the findings, I'm sorry. Hopefully, I'm clear that way, with my mask, is to accept the findings of this report and direct staff to incorporate these recommendations, all of them. Actually, staff didn't have a single recommendation that we we didn't concur with. Incorporate them into the multimodal plan. What that means is diving deeper into some of the issues as we get through the design. I really appreciate your comments. I know you and I have had conversations about not only the trash service, but obviously, the delivery of goods. And that function's quite a bit different than a trash service. So all of those details need to continue to be flushed out as well as funding and timing. And the piece that I think is really important, that I appreciate the level of effort that Preston has put into this consideration, is through that multimodal plan, we're going to be doing a prioritization effort, right? And this project is very, very closely linked with our recommended Baldi Extension Project, which is actually in our Module Three Transportation Plan. And I say that because these improvements are very heavily focused around pedestrians and bicycles. They are, these recommendations, and Preston, you can, as always, correct me if I'm wrong here, they are not very compatible with the current use of Division and the way we use it, specifically truck traffic. We have to get truck traffic off of Division substantially to be able to implement these these changes. And so that's really why, and I appreciate the way that these have been laid out as far as short-term, midterm and long-term solutions. That is a similar format that our multimodal plan is intended to be rolled out in. And so I think they'll fit kind of in that package accordingly. And those recommendations will come to you again through the multimodal planning efforts. So I just wanted to give that kind of recapture there.
All right. Excellent. Is there any member of the public that would like to comment on this issue?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I would remind anyone who's on Zoom to please raise their hand if you want to provide a comment on this issue. And there's no one in the room either, it looks like. So entertain a motion to approve the resolution accepting the Division Avenue Road Safety Audit. Is there a motion? So entertain a motion to approve the resolution accepting the Division Avenue Road Safety Audit. Is there a motion? So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Darling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilwoman Spurrow?
Yes.
Motion passes. The final item under all business is an update from construction and development services manager Amanda Wilson of the city's drinking water master plan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I am going to share my screen here and, um, wanted to, um, remind everyone, this is a presentation-only, no action is being requested this evening. And to that end, I intend to keep the presentation very short. The bulk of the presentation is actually intended um, for February seventeenth, when we plan to take a deeper dive into the master plan itself, um, specifically with our consultants Murray Smith and Dan, our city engineer, Dan Tadic, um, who has been the project lead on this. So tonight, I'm merely going to introduce the document to you, see if I know how to navigate through it, and then we'll give you a couple of weeks to digest things and come back with a more robust presentation and request for a decision. There it is, the cover page. So the water system master plan, this is specifically, um, as the mayor noted, um, directed towards our drinking water system. And the, the scope of work, um, actually began in late two thousand and nineteen. Our consultants and Dan frankly did, in my opinion, a fantastic job of working with our entire team, our operations team, our plant operators, our guys in the field, um, in distribution as well, and really taking a hard look at our entire water system holistically. They did it in a timely manner. We've had this draft for, um, just shy of a year and took a pause in bringing it forward to you, because not only from a pandemic perspective, but also frankly from a growth perspective, we've been having a lot of changes happening. And so, um, I think that it's gotten to a really good place. You will notice in the plan that some of the data is referencing things from two thousand and nineteen, and I just wanted to give you a heads up as to why. Um, this is the beginning of what is going to be a, um, ongoing planning process. Um, and so with that, I will just walk you through a little bit of, um, the document itself. As I mentioned, this was developed by Murray Smith. And our, sorry, I'm going to the right page here. And just as I'm zooming in here, I will note that, um, this document will be posted in the news section of our website. So if you go to the front page of samplepointidaho.gov, it'll be, um, a story with a link that you'll be able to download it. So the document itself really includes these six components that are up on the screen. It begins with an executive summary, um, that's a nice snapshot of the hundred-and-fifty-three-page plan, depending on how much time you have in your reading. It does a good job of summarizing all the key points. Uh, the six sections include the existing system description, uh, what do we have out there right now? And then number two is our water demand forecasting. That's really looking at growth in our population forecasts, um, so that we can take a better look of how much water are we anticipating needing? Um, not only now, but into the twenty-year planning future. Um, needing for drinking as well as fire flow, um, I'll mention that as well. Then section number three takes a deeper dive into water quality and regulations. I will say that the quality of water in Sample Point is considered, um, good. If they had a really good, I think it would be really good, but that's where the, the adjectives stop. So I'm really proud of our team for, um, for achieving that water quality as well as their compliance. So this kind of describes to you what are the various components of compliance that we have to, um, abide by and what are we regulated by. Then we also have, um, system analysis. This was really the deep dive into the modeling of our, um, our system itself and how is it performing? So from a supply, storage perspective, our treatment plants, taking a look at that, um, the distribution system and the hydraulic analysis, basically as an example, how well do we get fire flow, if you will, all the way to the northeast side of Cooten? The answer's not very well. That's one thing we need to improve. So that's a deeper dive that it takes into it. And then finally, the facility condition assessment is, what's the condition of our equipment, right? How good are our pipes? How is our water treatment plant? Do they need to be replaced? It really looks to answer all of those questions. And then my favorite part is section number six, that's where the fun projects are. So this says, okay, from everything we learned through section one through five, where do we land? And it, it lands with a number, a very, very long list of projects, capital improvement projects that we need to implement. Some of those are things like we need to update this plan in about another year, actually, to adjust for some of that growth. Some of the things are really large capital improvements at our, um, water treatment facilities or things like backup generators. Some of them are, we need to replace a lot of pipes in town. And probably one of the most significant, um, aspects of our, um, recommended improvements. And I think I keep honing into this, because right across from me is the, is our fire chief, is fire flow. So I look forward to taking a deeper vi-, dive into that, um, portion of the conversation. So I would encourage you to take a look at all of these sections. The kind of punchline, if you will, is, uh, on page one hundred and forty-six. This is what that capital improvement plan looks like. It's multiple pages and at the bottom line, the recommendation at this point in time is that over the next twenty years, we anticipate needing to spend just over thirty million dollars on just our drinking water system. And that is limited and with the caveat of that's within the city of Sample Point. And that is, um, extended to where we serve water, um, in our current areas. So it's not really capturing any anticipated growth into our area of city impact, basically to the west. Nor is it capturing much growth as we anticipate in the coming years to the north, right? And so that's why I say this is a plan that's going to continue to evolve over time.
And what was that time scope?
Twenty.
Twenty years?
Mm-hmm. Thirty million in twenty years. Um, and so why would we do a plan like this? What's the value? I just told you the what, so here's the why. The why is these projects and our system is obviously operated by the rates, so the utility rate payers, um, as an enterprise fund. And we are getting ready to launch a rate study to take a closer look at all of our rates. Are we charging enough? Are we charging too much? How do we need to accomplish and what do our rates need to be to achieve this twenty-year plan and make sure that we are able to provide everybody drinking water as we move into the, the future? So this really helps to serve as one of the several baselines that go into that rate study, which is why we're bringing it forward to you. And with that, I should also note that a portion of this plan was paid for, um, in part by a grant with the Department of Environmental Quality. So they are a partner in this process and, um, I thought it was worth mentioning that as well. So again, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now, or we can certainly save them for, um, the discussion on February seventeenth. Murray Smith will be here as well as, as Stan Tadic to run through the details with you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Okay. Great. Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment on this item, man clerk?
I am not seeing anyone, Mr. Mayor.
And no one present in this room? Okay. So there are no new business items on the agenda this evening, but we do have an executive session scheduled. I would entertain a motion to convene an executive session pursuant to Idaho Code Section seventy-four dash two oh six one J to consider labor contract matters authorized under Idaho Code Section seventy-four dash two oh six A one A and B. Is there a motion?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. This will be a roll call vote.
Councilman Spurrow?
Yes.
Councilman Darling?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Sherman?
Yes.
Councilwoman McAllister?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rule?
Yes.
Councilman Grove?
Yes.
Okay, we will now convene into executive session. I want to thank the members of the public who participated this evening and that will include the Zoom call this evening. And, uh, I'd ask those, uh, persons who are still in the room to leave unless they're part of, uh, essential staff. So thanks for coming.
Thanks, public. Nice to see you again.